Ms. Snowbird?
Here.
Mr. McCaslin?
Here.
Mrs. Maynes?
Here.
Mr. Mezek?
Here.
Mr. Oberto?
Here.
Mr. Palmer? Dr. George? Mr. Hutter? And Mr. Leger?
Here. I want to thank you everybody for being here this evening. I just want you guys to know it's going to be a fast one. That made me promise I'll only allow one trip down memory lane.
Thank you.
No report. Sorry, my bad. No report.
No report.
This is Lyman.
I will just report that Mr. Watson and I will be watching the webinar tomorrow that is a review of Governor Wolf's budget presentation. As most of you know, there was additional dollars allocated to the basic ed subsidy as well as special education. More details to follow however, and we will certainly update as Mr. Watson did to the Finance Committee tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The Education Department.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to Chloe and Adam for the student report.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
So Mountain View this month is having the American Heart Association jump, which is some great cardio, which I'm sure is not a coincidence. The kindergarten registration for all the tiny little humans for next year is February 11 through 14 in the CSC of the corresponding elementary schools. Mountain View and LES are celebrating George Washington's birthday at Fort Ligonier this month for first graders. All elementary schools have EnviroDrom assemblies. Mountain View is holding By George Parent Show on February 22nd. It's at 1:15 if you'd like to go. Mountain View is also having Read Across America. That week is February 25th through March 1st, so pick up a good book before then if you want to join them. LES is holding National Children's Dental Month. Bagley has Rock and Read-A-Thon. The kickoff is February 22nd. It goes until March 1st. Bagley also has a lot of other fun things this month, like Winter Carnival, third grade recorder concert, and Carnegie Science Center is presenting Grounding Fathers on March 7th. So, thanks.
Before I came out tonight, I was informed that Pitt game is on, so we'll keep it brief.
Thanks.
You're welcome. That's on my phone. I'll listen to the score. Junior high, there's an eighth grade move-up night, February 20th. That's 6:30 in the senior high, and that's where they get the chance to look at different scheduling options and the opportunities that are provided for them up at senior high, which obviously is a lot, especially with our new schedule. There's a lot of different questions, so this eighth grade move-up night is going to be, I'm sure, pretty informative for a lot of people. And then in senior high, we have Spring Musical. Menible Mantra practices have started. They got the cast going, I heard. There were a few people in the musical that explained very well, and it sounds very nice. I hope you all should know. I'll learn from that. Have a good one. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chloe. Well, number four, Mr. Frump, anything you'd like to talk about tonight?
Chloe, actually, stole my thunder. Just wanted to remind everyone that kindergarten registration is going on here at the CSC. Started yesterday, today, tomorrow, and Thursday. We're close to 100 students registered thus far. The portal seems to be playing to rave reviews better than ever. So, again, if you have registered, you can. A little bit of a slow start yesterday, I think, with the weather and all in the morning, but close to all of them, so that's important.
Good. We have a presentation on educational programs from the elementary schools. Bagley, LaTred Elementary, and Mountain View on achievement data.
I promised the principals that I'd give them a good introduction. I think that it was Mrs. Holler that said she wanted song and dance, but since Mr. Leger said to keep it short, we'll cut off the song and dance introduction. So, anyway, the elementary principals have put together a review of their achievement data from the three schools and the three schools combined. A reminder that achievement data is that snapshot in time. It is PSSA scores from last year. In addition to achievement data, you have growth data, and both of those items are looked at heavily when data is reviewed. I think you'll see many areas of strength. You'll see some areas of concern tonight. I know that they've put together a plan at the end to talk about ways to address those concerns. So, we have Mrs. Holler, Mrs. Stewart, and Mrs. Pellet.
Hold on. Sorry. Mr. Frump, there's time for song and dance.
No, she's quick.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. The elementary principals, we're happy to be here this evening to present our annual information about our achievement data, which we get from our PSSA scores. Mr. Frump, you did a nice job starting us out as far as what those mean, and truly, as we go through this and when we look at data, we do recognize that it is one piece of data that's in our hands at the time. It's also the public data, but many times throughout the day, we're reviewing growth data, we're reviewing benchmarks, we're reviewing diagnostics, and we know where students are at all times. This actually is the summative data every year. So, the first thing we did for you this evening was put together our three buildings, and these are all three elementary schools with our data combined. You will see under the 2017-18, the first column includes Bagley, Mountain View, and LES, our math data and ELA data, and grade four includes our science data. And what we did was compare those to where the state average is, and you will see that for every single content area in every grade, we did score above the state average. We know that that is not the area where we want to set our threshold, but it does give us some information compared to whatever all the other schools are doing in the state. As you look at this, you will see that our ELA data seems to be at a pretty good level. And the reason for that is over the last, I would say, eight years, we put a pretty good system in place for ELA. We have Tier Three, which is a different type of programming for students who are struggling. We have a response to intervention program, and what that does is we look at our instruction, we look at our interventions, we look at our data, and then we make decisions about students. And we do that based on progress monitoring. We watch them, we watch them grow, we know where they're struggling, and we're able to put the interventions in to help them. The other thing I told you about is the Tier Three programs that we have and our research-based interventions. If you look at our math scores, math is not where we want it to be. The test was changed numerous years ago to include the PA Core. Our focus truly has been strong in ELA. We did some professional development with teachers as far as how to instruct math, but as we go forward and we're really reviewing our data, we recognize the need to do for math what we've done for ELA, and that is to look for a response to instruction and intervention program, to look for research-based interventions, to find out what type of Tier Three programs may be available. I will tell you, through that research, we have not found many strong intervention, research-based intervention programs at this time. We continue to look for them. We've been talking to other districts, and we will continue to do that. That is our focus going forward, is to create this system for math that we have for ELA.
They're just not readily available. But the other issue too, and I know that the principals will discuss this at some point, we have a 120-minute block for language arts instruction in the elementary. Eighty minutes of that block is whole group instruction, new instruction. Forty minutes of that timeframe is that RTII time, that time for intervention, for enrichment, for remediation. The interventions for ELA are readily available and out there. You know, we have our core group, but we're always searching for more and different. They're not readily available for math, but in addition, we have an 80-minute math block. So, I think that one of the other things that will need to be examined is the schedule to fund if there's time to maybe add an intervention block into that 80 minutes or expand that timeframe. When you expand that timeframe, you've got 120 minutes for language arts, 120 minutes for math, you're at four hours of every day on math and language arts instruction, social studies, science, encore, lunch, recess. I think what they're going to propose is a 12-hour school.
He's seven days a week, right?
Yeah. There you go. It can be done. We just have to find the right model, and like I said, we have been researching different models and different interventions, and we will continue to do so as we go forward through this next year. As we move forward through our presentation this evening, we are each building will present their data in the same format, so as we go through, I'll explain what you see in the charts prior to me explaining my data. But also, moving forward through this presentation, we're going to be comparing the 17 and 18 PSSA assessment with prior years, so we have a four-year trend of data that you will see. But what we do want to point out is, last year, things changed with the assessment. The ELA assessment went from four sections to three sections, removing the standalone reading prompts. Also, in grades three to eight, the math used to be three sections with a possible 72 points. Last year, it was changed to two sections totaling about 52 total points. This provided us opportunities for our students to actually show what they know. Also, as you go through the presentation, you will see there are bold print percentages. In each slide, any number, any percentage that is bold represents a percentage that is above the state average. Okay. The first slide for each building represents all of our students who took the PSSA each year. This includes any student who is new to the building or to the district, so basically what this chart will reflect is more curriculum and instruction than it would be student growth. And over this four-year period, we have spent a great deal of time providing professional development to our staff focusing on the skills that are related to the PSSA. Text-dependent analysis questions, closed reading, inquiry and learning, high-impact instructions, strategies, sorry. And we've also refocused our ELA instruction to the standards in using our textbook as more of a tool to teach those standards.
You okay?
Yeah. As professionals, the teachers were finding that they were using texts in the past that were teaching the skill that they were on in Journeys better than the material that Journeys had provided, so the text, essentially, meaning the story. So, we encourage our teachers to use that professional judgment in those areas and supplement and incorporate paired text into their instruction for the week. You can see that the scores at ELA have increased in all grades other than fourth grade, but they're still remaining above the state average. So, our focus on the ELA, focus on the standards, using the Journeys as a tool to instruct those standards, you can see, is making improvement in our scores. Breaking down our data a little bit more, we will all look at cohorts of students. Cohorts of students are only students who took all of the assessments listed. So, this removes the students who have moved into the district or out of the district. So, if you look diagonally at the colors, those are cohorts of students moving. So, you can see the four-year trend of the students who were in sixth grade last year.
So, that fifth grade math, we're putting that down, the most hard one, to significantly the change in the test. I mean, other things being stable, that's the big change.
That was the major change was in the assessment.
We had to change teachers. We had to change.
There was a change in teachers.
At Bagley, there was a change in teachers.
Absolutely. Breaking down the data even more, we will look at a subfield that this date does focus on, which is historically underperforming. Historically underperforming students are students in special education or economically disadvantaged and English language learners. Bagley Elementary School is literally the ELA, ELL students in my building. But to help you understand this data just a little bit more, for example, let's look at third grade. This column is the column you've already seen, and that is all students in third grade, percentage of students proficient and advanced in math and ELA. Historically underperforming students in third grade last year, out of 86 students, 42 of my students were historically underperforming. That's almost half of my students in third grade. Of those 42 students, 27 were proficient or advanced out of the 42, which is 67 and a half percent. And in ELA, 35 out of my 42 historically underperforming students were proficient and advanced, equaling the 83.3 percent. Going through the grades, obviously, some grades, as sixth grade is, are more closely related than others. You can see a bigger gap in fourth grade and fifth grade. Strengths at Bagley, looking through our PSSA data, I have pointed out that historically underperforming in grade three, as I said, almost half of those students fall into that student group, and we had a significant amount of those students who were still proficient and advanced. And I give kudos to my teachers. They worked very hard, working in small groups with students more, doing center work, not teaching full-group math, full-group instruction, really breaking it down based on needs to push kids forward. Also, grade three, if you go back to the four-year trend, you will see that every year, my third grade is improving, their proficiency continues to increase. Despite the change in the assessment, my grade three and six continue to show growth in the number of students proficient and advanced in both ELA and math. And all of my grade levels besides my grade five math, which I recognize is a concern, and we're definitely digging deeper into our PSSA data and our CDT data and things to see what we can find, all of my grade levels were over the state average, anywhere from 13% up to 29% above the state average. With that being said, I will move to...
Pull it back a little bit, please.
Which slide do I have?
Just go back one. Just a reminder that that grade three PSSA is, I don't want to say it's more important, but when it comes to calculating a school performance profile number for each school, keep in mind that that third grade score is proportionally greater than the other grade levels because it's the first standardized test that students are taking in elementary schools. Just keep that in the back of your mind.
Yes.
Plus, Mrs. Stewart just mentioned CDT. She used that term, CDT, which means?
Classroom Diagnostic Tool.
Remember that we purchased GoMath and Journeys as our programs in the elementary schools, our language arts and our math programs. Those come with benchmark assessments. We found with the Storytime program that the benchmark assessments were okay, they were good, but with the new Journeys program, after going through it for a year last, through it in a year last year, the principals, teachers, decided that the amount of information and the reliability of the information they were getting from those benchmark assessments, not only in Journeys last year, but in the updated GoMath, wasn't worthwhile for our staff members. It didn't appropriately identify how well the kids were being prepared, not only within the program, but how well, it wasn't a good predictor of PSSA performance as well. They investigated, and they recommended that we move away from the benchmarks that come with those two core programs and move toward a classroom diagnostic tool. Those of you that are on the Curriculum Committee have heard about the CDT since the beginning of the year. It's been a big emphasis of professional development, and I know they're going to talk about that. I won't take that from you.
Leave my slide.
But I just want you to know what those terms mean, and that that CDT is being used more as a benchmark now because we feel that it will be a more reliable indicator than the benchmarks became with the program.
And Mr. Frump, as you were speaking about third grade, you know, in the day of SPPs score and now the Future Ready Index, it is significantly more. It counts as double. It's an early indicator, so your grade three reading assessment and your scores are double.
Very lightweight.
It does a great lot of weight. So, that is what he was referring to, and in my side, I do focus a lot on the grade three because it is always on my mind. Good. Nature of elementary school. Again, just to remind you, the slide that you are looking at compares different cohorts of students throughout the years. So, when you look at the grade three math, you have different groups of students from 2014 through the 17-18 year. So, our current data is located right here. Our math data from third grade, we seem to, again, it was 72.4, but I think it's unfair to compare it to the beginning year, even though we're excited to see the score go up. We do have different cohorts of students that we're comparing. And then you will see our dip in the math scores around fourth grade, fifth grade, and our sixth grade math score was lower. I did have a meeting with our teacher leader, our math teacher leader, this past summer. We looked at the sixth grade eligible content. We did a little bit of revising, hoping to counteract that score and get better results this school year. Then you see our ELA data for this school year for third grade, 70%, 84%, 75%, and 70%. And our science eighth grade, or fourth grade, 88.1. On the next slide, again, you're looking at the same students like Mrs. Stewart had set. The data that we pooled eliminated any student who did not take the assessment. So, when you look at the yellow, these are our current seventh graders that they went the whole way through LaTred Elementary School. Again, our math at 60, and we did see that decrease. And our ELA showed an increase in fourth grade, and we maintained within a couple percentage points. The green are our current sixth graders as we go through, and then that salmon color, these are our current fifth graders. And at the bottom, you'll see the different colors, these numbers, those were the number of students that were included in the cohort. This is the historically underperforming slide, and again, these students, sorry. The students in this category are comprised of students who are in special education and who are economically disadvantaged. These are the numbers from the previous slide. In this column, these are all students. And just to make note, at LaTred Elementary School, in every single grade, 50% of our students are in the historically underperforming category. That is every grade. So, as we look at this, our teachers, I give them credit, they work really hard to meet that proficiency standard, and when you look, 72% out of that, the historically underperforming, 67.8% showed proficiency. As I pool the data, the students, when I desegregated a little bit, the students who are listed as economically disadvantaged, they have a tendency, a higher tendency to score at a proficiency level. It's the students who are listed in our special education population that have a tendency to score lower. And from all of that information, the strengths that we believe we have at LaTred Elementary is that grade four ELA is strong. They showed growth from that third grade. In grades four and five, our historically underperforming cohort performed above the state average in all subjects. Every grade at LaTred Elementary School performed above the state average. And then we listed our advanced students, the percentage that we have in that category. So, when you look at proficiency, that includes advanced and proficient students. And those are our numbers.
Sherri?
Yes.
Take two minutes or less, and talk about the process that you went through with your sixth grade math teachers this summer to identify standards that you felt were being covered enough.
Absolutely. They obviously were devastated to see that score. There is no doubt that they worked really hard. So, what we did is start from the beginning. We looked at the eligible content for grade six grade math. In my office, we had them all over the walls. We hung them up. We looked at where the students were expected to perform, and then we started to align our GoMath program to those areas, as well as look at various resources that we could bring in to offer other experiences or other ways of teaching the content to the students. So, we are interested in doing that in hopes of having them learn, be able to achieve at that proficiency level for sixth grade. That process is something that I believe we'll look at as we go forward for grades three through six, looking at our overall math scores. Next is Mrs. Pellet from Mountain View.
I don't know that I need to explain exactly how these slides are going since you've seen them now consistently from the other two buildings, but when you look here at Mountain View, again, it's the same slide. So, you're looking at our 2017-2018 data along the right-hand column, and as you can see, they're all in gold, meaning they are all above the state average. There are some high points, there are some low points. Of course, as we've been saying, math is a target area that we know is something that we need to be addressing. A high point, which we will look at, is 100% in science. 100% of our students in fourth grade were proficient or advanced on the science exam. Often times, when people talk about the science exam, they say it is a reading test, that as long as a child can read and comprehend, they can take the science PSSAs and score well. We have, as you can see, 94, 93, 93.9, and finally, we hit 100% of all of our students at Mountain View being proficient or advanced on the science PSSAs. So, that, of course, is something greatly celebrated. So, as you look through there, you can see there are some areas where we did increase our percentage of proficient and advanced students, but then there are also areas where we did decrease. Let me go back to this one. I wonder why they're out of order on here. Here is the cohort data. So, as Sherri and Kim had explained, if you look at this salmon color, that is our current fifth grade student. So, you can see how they perform in the third grade PSSA as well as the fourth grade PSSA. And then the green color is our current sixth graders at Mountain View, and you can see how they... And as you can see, they're all in gold, meaning they are all above the state average. There are some high points, there are some low points. Of course, as we have been saying, math is a target area that we know is something that we need to be addressing. A high point which we will look at is 100% in science. 100% of our students in fourth grade were proficient or advanced on the science exam. Often times when people talk about the science exam, they say it is a reading test. That as long as a child can read and comprehend, they can take the science PSSAs and score well. We have, as you can see, 94, 93, 93.9. Finally, we hit 100% of all of our students at Mountain View being proficient or advanced on the science PSSAs. So that, of course, is something greatly celebrated. So as you look through there, you can see there are some areas where we did increase our percentage of proficient and advanced students, but then there are also areas where we did decrease. Let me go back to this one. I wonder why they're out of order on here. Here is the cohort data. So as Sherri and Kim had explained, if you look, if you look at this salmon color, that is our current fifth grade students. So you can see how they perform in the third grade PSSA as well as the fourth grade PSSA. And then the green color is our current sixth graders at Mountain View. And you can see how they perform in third, fourth, and fifth grade on their PSSAs. And then finally, the yellow are our students that are now at the junior high. You can see how they perform in third, fourth, fifth, and sixth grade on their PSSAs. Again, as a reminder, we are only showing you the students that were with us in our building for all of the assessments that are up there. So the end number is down below. That's actually how many students were sitting at Mountain View taking that assessment each Here's a slide that's hard to look at. Here is Mountain View's historically underperforming data. You can see how we performed overall as a building. That's our achievement data listed in the second column. And then the third column is our historically underperforming data. I think a point that is very important for you to know, unlike Badley and LES, our number of historically underperforming students is between 20, or 21 to 25, depending upon the grade level. So therefore, we have 21 to 25 students in each grade three, four, five, and six that are either special education, economically disadvantaged, or L. At Mountain View, we do have English language learners. So we are looking at a very small percentage, but in the end, that percentage of students matters. And it's super important that we, as the educators at Mountain View, are continuing to focus on what we can do for that historically underperforming subgroup. The past few days, this is the problem that I've taken to the professional development that I've been a part of. And we have tried different ways and different strategies to work on our instruction for these students. And when we find the root cause of it, we question ourselves, is it that our historically underperforming students are not engaged in their learning at Mountain View? They're not finding what they're learning relevant in their day-to-day lives? And so we, as a team that were gone the past two days, we have a lot of different strategies that we're looking at that are high impact, low cost, high impact, high cost, different ways that we can address this problem of our historically underperforming subgroup. As you can see though on there, there is a couple areas that we did meet above the state average, but then there are quite a few that were way below the state average. Strengths. Grade four was the area of strength at Mountain View this year. The grade four proficiency increase in all assessments, which included the science, and above the state average in all assessments within historically underperforming. So what I am saying is not only did they increase their proficiency level, but they also were above the state average for that subgroup that we know is a targeted area of concern at Mountain View Elementary School. Proficiency of 100% within science, and I think it's important for you to know that on the science PSSA, we had 100% of our students participate. So what that means is every child in fourth grade took the PSSAs, and every child in fourth grade at Mountain View Elementary School were proficient or advanced on that science assessment. And then finally, our advanced students, and this is using all grade levels, so three, four, five, and six, those are our advanced students on the ELA assessment, the math assessment, as well as the science assessment. This too, I think, is an important piece that we have had conversations about with growth at Mountain View. Growth has sometimes been a concern at Mountain View because we weren't necessarily able to make our advanced students grow. We have changed some of our processes and procedures of how we instruct our advanced learners, and it's working. So I am excited to say that the growth of our advanced students is happening. Every student is growing every day at Mountain View, and that growth, even for our advanced students, is happening. So now I'm going to take off my Mountain View elementary hat, and we'll be talking about all three of our elementary buildings. So what are our areas of focus? And what are we doing right now to address the needs that we have within our buildings? Mr. Frank, I started to talk about the classroom diagnostic tools. This we have, we are using instead of our benchmarks. It is a diagnostic. So if you are a third grade student, sitting in a third grade class, prior to implementing CDTs, you took the third grade ELA benchmark, you took the third grade math benchmark, and it reported to us as the instructors how you were performing against third grade standards. So if you were advanced, you were advanced on third grade standards. We don't know how advanced, we just knew the grade. What a CDT does is you, as a third grade student, will start in your CDT, start to take the assessment, and then it starts to move your questions to determine how advanced, where are you, to what grade level can you perform? So it starts to dig deeper into what the child actually knows. You might have a child that is advanced on a math PSSA or on an ELA PSSA, but are they advanced in all reporting categories? Chances are, the answer is no. And now we know that because the CDT reports to us just not proficient against their grade, it is how are they doing in all the areas? So you might have a child in sixth grade that took the sixth grade CDT ELA that is doing well, but you will see that, oh geez, they're having difficulty in vocabulary. So the other reporting categories, they're doing okay, but vocabulary is the piece that we need to work on with this student. So it will give us as to what grade level they are, it will go up grade levels, it will go down grade levels. And my goodness, the students know, I was red in this area, I'm blue in this area, oh now I'm green in this area. They know because they get that result immediately back to them because it is all online. That was implemented at the beginning of this school year. Today was actually math, math CDTs at Mountain View, so they're getting their data back. Now, I will tell you, the CDTs have been an amazing tool for us to use for the data piece, and we are getting better and better at getting the assessment taken in a timely way. High impact influences on achievement. This is what we are using within our elementary buildings for our professional development for our teachers. This past summer, the three of us attended an institute, and we were working on Hattie's work. And what Hattie talks about is there are influences that are high impact. So you may be doing things within your classroom that you think is a great strategy, but in the end, it's low impact. And then there are some things you think, ah, maybe I'll try it, I don't know, but it's a high impact. So you know what, you better start trying it. So we started at the beginning of the year with this book, talking about high impact strategies and what that means. From there then, each month during our Wildcat Wisdom time and our faculty meetings, we focus on a high impact strategy. So for example, one month was on feedback. And we explained to the teachers what appropriate feedback is. We had videos to share with them. And we explained why that is a high impact strategy. And we actually give them the numbers, like it's point, I'm trying to figure out feedback, it's .89 is the percentage for that, for that influence. So that then they turn around and they do this. So for example, feedback. Hattie explains that it isn't about taking a test and responding to a child with disagree. Is a grade enough feedback for the child? No. What's more important is not the grade, what more important is the learning that goes beyond that. So if you return a test, a math assessment, you return the test and a child missed 10 problems. Now the child knows that they didn't understand those 10 problems. Now it's time for test corrections. And what do we do with our children from getting the feedback of you missed 10, to how are we going, or what are we going to learn, and what are we learning in order to get the test corrections done? It's about the appropriate type of feedback and when to give that feedback so that students are able to use it to expand their learning. Other strategies that we have been using or have been discussing in our Wildcat Wisdom are up there vocabulary, metacognition. All of these are high impact influences on achievement. And then finally, here we are with the closing, the achievement gap. And this is, as I had mentioned in the slide before, an area that we are always concerned about. How do we make sure that there isn't an achievement gap between our whole population versus our historically underperforming population? And we question, what are some things that we can do so that there isn't that gap? Are they engaged in their learning? Is what we're teaching relevant to them? Why do they want to learn what we are asking them to learn? And so that is an area that we have been focusing on throughout this school year and the years to come. Are there any questions?
I don't have a question, but I do have two comments. Thank you, first of all. That's one egg. I have two questions. And of course, knowing me, they're going to be about math. First of all, thank you. I like your mentioning about when students get the test back and they have text questions wrong, and the importance of giving them appropriate feedback. I ask you also to, of course, with your teachers, that there's also appropriate questions that need to be asked, not just feedback. Asking the student to explain what they did to get to that wrong answer will give you much more information than just simply giving them feedback. That's, that was item number one.
High impact influences. Absolutely. And interestingly enough, exactly what you're saying, we've been having these conversations within our IEP meetings about an accommodation as far as students getting rewarded or credit for responding, and it's not about what is the right answer. Because many times the child gets the right answer because it's on a digital test. And our conversation is always about, it's not about the right answer, it's about understanding how to get to the right answer that is the important part.
And that's why the appropriate questions is more important than appropriate feedback. Second thing, I've been here a long time and I've heard this discussion on and on and on, and we're looking for things in math. We have got to just admit that when you look at the current breakdown of minutes in English versus English minutes in math, you've got 40 minutes a day, every day. In this case, for four years, just grades three through six. That's a total of 160 minutes. That's the equivalent to two years of instruction at our current rate of mathematics, less than the amount of time we spend in English language arts. So as we keep looking for the magic bullet, it's also time on task. And we look at the numbers and we look at them consistently, and they're consistently the same way, but that's because consistently we've been doing the same amount of time. At some point, not saying they have to be the same, but at some point, we've got to look at that dynamic and see if it helps us to improve at all. I know it's difficult, I do. And thank you, you've got to do a great job. Just those two things I wanted to add. And I don't want to be the only ones, you know, who takes that opinion. I'd be willing to ask Mrs. Mains if she agreed. I'd, just pick it out of one number on the board.
Sure, I agree.
Any other questions for us? Thank you.
Thank you.
Attached to your agenda, the curriculum committee meeting, minutes from our meeting on Tuesday, March 2nd. They are very interesting to read because we heard some amazing things that were going on here in professional development and things being presented. So I think there were hoping over. Our next curriculum committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, March 19th, 5:30 PM here in the CSC. And at that point, we will be discussing new courses for next year and new textbooks. If you'd like to join us. That is all I have.
Thank you. And also, I want to thank the teachers. They did a great job of, not just teaching, but our presence. Thank you. There's quality to this now since there's your treasures report that will be on the next agenda. Actually, in the event I pay the bills will be in the general island. And I always said, I rates at E, that would be on the executive too. And this is another part I like to build, will be a pretty big grants, a boost of better nation for the United Way for our school readiness program. And the next finance committee meeting will be on Tuesday, March 12th, at 5:30 at Senior Island. Authorization and planning, I mean, we'll just do that too. The facilities and authorization meeting will be on, it'll be attached with one of the next agenda. And that next meeting will be held Thursday, March 7th, at 3:30 at Administration Building. The student that do most of their work for this period.
Yes. We're going to have a national committee meeting in March, but the date is yet to be determined, so do you know when we'll decide that?
Yeah, I was trying to make the winter sports season wrap up with boys' basketball so we all, we could discuss all the teams. So I'm looking probably mid-March to be safe, that wrestling and basketball swimming all in, so we could talk about that too. And while we just were informed that our basketball team, the second seed, just announced it at the WBAO, we will play the winner of North Allegheny and Canwick Millen on Saturday, September, or yeah, Saturday, February 23rd.
Do you remember that game at the Yacht Park?
No, I, they're just sending me stuff right now. I don't think it's a, it's a neutral site. I mean, it'll be part of the doubleheader somewhere that Saturday. They usually send us the Palmer Morgan, so.
We got a perimeter that called Crowe's yard or basketball team winning the conference so far.
Well, that was the first time in the history of the school they finished section champs with an undefeated section record.
Wow.
In a 10-0 in section. In fact, to be honest, nobody in the WBAO beat them this year. They lost to the City League school, Taylor Arlazis State Champs, and they lost to the City New York team in that Christmas tournament. Other than that, they were 20-0. So we'll see what happens.
I'm done with athletics, I'll take you, go.
Yeah, please.
The intermediate unit, on your, next week on your agenda will be a resolution to approve participation in the WIU Joint Purchasing Consortium for the 2019-2020 authorization for the multi-purpose paper bid. Also, we, on your agenda will be to approve a nomination to the Westmoreland County Committee on Legislative Action, ARCOLA, and we will be nominating someone next week. We will also approve a WIU step-up, Westmoreland Support Resolution. If you remember, Dr. Conway talked about this when we came to our January 15 meeting, and that is to help students, help have resources for students who have mental illnesses. So that will also be an agenda. It's just simply a letter of support that's on the ass for at this point in time, so you will be approving a letter of support to that. And summary of the WIU Board meeting minutes from January 22nd is attached. The next meeting is Tuesday, February 26th, at 7:00 PM in the Portland and the WIU Building.
I just wanted to go back here and cover this, our trend of sort of here this evening, but the Heart of Recreation Committee meeting will be Thursday, February 21st. That'll be at the municipal building, and it's in the Greenberg. Thank you. This is music.
Thank you.
The EWCTC Joint Operating Committee summary meeting minutes from January 23rd are attached to board's agenda. And the EWCTC open house will be on Thursday, February 21st. That'll be from 5:00 to 7:30 at the EWCTC building. And the next EWCTC Joint Operating Committee meeting will be on Wednesday, February 27th, and that'll be at 7:00 at the EWCTC building.
Thank you. Back to you, Mrs. Mains.
We will be holding a board policy meeting on March the 6th at 1:00 PM in the Administrative Building.
Building, and then you'll have policy to approve anything.
Mr. Palmer thought here, so the Technology Meeting will be February 19th, 6:00 PM at the CSC.
Next week, we would ask the board to move on a resolution to approve resignations of Heidi Peters, Healthroom Assistant, and Anna Rexinger, Science Teaching Assistant. In addition, we would ask the board to approve three additional substitute teachers for the school district for the 18-19 school year, as well as approve a classified appointment of Erica Krug as the Healthroom Assistant. We will have a name to replace a full-time Spanish teacher at our junior high school for next week, as well as, and it's an attachment to your agenda this evening, to approve the spring 2019 coaches and their salaries. In addition, under other business, as Mr. Krenka mentioned, we are in the process of doing kindergarten registration. If you haven't already and you're a parent of a kindergarten student, we invite you to register. In addition, the eighth grade move-up night, which I believe one of the students also referenced that this evening, is Wednesday, February 20th. Our next Breakfast of Champions at the Senior High School is Thursday, February 21st. The Senior High School Musical, which is March 1st, 2nd, and 3rd, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, is Man of La Mancha. Hopefully, everyone can attend. Our parent teacher conferences for the spring is our Thursday, March 7th, and Poler Puzza, the high school event, is Friday, March 8th. I would also note that because of two days that we were closed because of inclement weather, will be made up on Monday, February 18th, which is next Monday, obviously, as well as Tuesday, April 23rd, that is the day, the last day of the spring break, we will be in school that day also, at this point, making up any of the days that we had missed two weeks ago. Any additional days that we might miss from inclement weather would be added at the end of the year. I would also note and compliment everyone in the district or staff about Greater Woodtrope's ranking of number 49 in the NISH survey. As we were referencing before, I believe that when I look at it, Greater Woodtrope is the first school in Westmoreland County in that list. This is a combination of public school districts across the state, public school districts. Just a little background, I didn't necessarily know where this company had come from, they are out of Pittsburgh, and they do rankings, started initially with ranking colleges, and more recently started to include public school districts across the state. As far as how these rankings are done, there's about ten different factors that they consider. Fifty percent of the ranking is academic grades, SAT, ACT scores, state assessment proficiencies, I said. But there are numerous other items that are added into this percentage of a hundred percent, but fifty percent is the academic grades. It's all available online if you're interested in looking at it. So congratulations to our teachers and principals who do a wonderful job, and it is a very nice honor to be in that top fifty group. So congratulations to everyone. Next Tuesday is our regular board meeting here at the CSC, and then March 12th and March 19th are our meetings in the month of March. That's all I have. Thank you.
I just wanted to congratulate our district too. I don't know if you mentioned your budget, but I don't want to criticize or correct the superintendent, but there's about 400 districts.
Do I not say?
I hope he did, lots. And if he did, I just want to emphasize that 500 districts in this area, we've made four now. Thank you very much.